Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you to the James City Service Authority Board of Directors' regular meeting. Mr. Powell?
Good evening. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Ms. Knoll?
Here. Any public comment tonight, sir?
No, ma'am.
No. Consent calendar, tonight's consent calendar consists of the following items: appointing the James City Service Authority Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, authorization for participation in the retirement health reimbursement account benefit, and the minutes' adoption. Does anyone wish to pull an item for discussion?
I'll move the consent calendar, but just to kind of parenthetically note that I really appreciate the recognitions being given to Ms. Lutna for her hard work over the years and her success in the agency.
Thank you, Mr. Lutna.
Do we have any public hearings?
We haven't.
Think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So there was a motion.
There was a motion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll?
Aye. Okay, Mr. Powell, are there any public hearings?
No public hearings and no board considerations.
Okay. Look to the board for comments.
Just want to express sympathy to Mr. Powell and the loss of his mother recently. I know it's a very challenging time and certainly want to send our condolences to you and your family.
Thanks, Mr. McGlinnan. I appreciate, all of you've reached out. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Yeah.
I know your mom must be very proud of you, Doug. I know you've been a good son. Your parents moved here, not so distant future, and so you've helped them get acclimated to our community. So appreciate what you did.
It's very thoughtful, Ms. Larson. Thank you.
General manager's update, please.
I don't, I don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
No.
Mr. Powell? Okay.
I can move to adjourn until 5:00 PM on October 14th, 2025.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
The call to order this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for a regular meeting. Mr. Stevens, please call the roll.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District. Ms. Knoll?
President?
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District and is vice chair to the board. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District and is chair to the board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman, county attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Okay. First, may I have a motion to amend the agenda to add a proclamation for the 2025 United Way Day of Caring?
So move.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
If we could, I will, we have a moment of silence before the pledge of allegiance. We do not have a scheduled pledge leader, but I'm going to impose upon Mr. Dean Lynch, who's visiting from VACO, to see if he would be willing to lead us in the pledge today.
Thank you, sir.
Pledge of Allegiance. Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We normally give you a county pin, but I don't think we have one right away, but one before the end of the meeting.
I'll give him mine. I have extra.
Thank you. Okay. Presentations. We have the, first up is VACO Achievement Awards presentation and Mr. Dean Lynch, Executive Director of VACO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You caught me a little off guard there with that pledge.
You did well. You did well.
But again, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Stevens, I'm Dean Lynch, Executive Director of the Virginia Association of Counties, and it's a pleasure to be here in James City County tonight to present the VACO Achievement Awards. For the benefit of your constituents who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, VACO has existed since 1934 to serve and support the efforts of county officials. We support counties in many ways. First is through our advocacy efforts, also through our education programs, member services, and communications. In 2003, we established our achievement award program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services and identifying programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. Today, I'm proud to present James City County with two achievement awards. A little bit about our program, this is the 23rd Annual Achievement Awards Program that we've had at VACO. This year, we received over 155 entries. This is truly a competitive program. We have three judges that look at all this and came up with a very small number of awards. The judges looked at several things. One, does the program offer an innovative solution to a problem? Does the program promote intergovernmental cooperation? Number three, can the program provide a model for other local governments to be able to emulate? And four, does the program represent an innovative approach to solving a solution in local government? And this year's award winners for James City County is the James City County Safety Rodeo Program and the James City County Stormwater Seminars. And I think we have someone to come up and speak about these programs and just describe them just a little bit before I give the awards.
Chairman, members of the board, General Services submitted several initiatives to VACO Achievement Awards Program. Of those two submissions, as you heard, the Safety Rodeo and Stormwater Seminars were selected. About three years ago, a dedicated 13-member employee committee from General Services, Risk Management, and JCSA came together with a vision to create an innovative way to put safety awareness at the forefront of every employee. Their efforts led to the development of the annual Safety Rodeo with one clear goal: making sure every one of us goes home safe at the end of the day. The stormwater and resource protection folks developed and led stormwater seminars that have become an invaluable resource for both the public and the development community, providing the latest updates on local, state, and stormwater regulations. On behalf of this incredible team, I want to sincerely thank VACO and the Board of Supervisors for recognizing their dedication and hard work and commitment to both our employees and our community. The recognition is really a big deal to us, so thank you.
For the awards? Can we bring people up for the awards? Just a little quick. This is the Safety Rodeo Program. If we can get a photo.
Name come down, too.
Yes. James City County Safety Rodeo, if you would come up.
We actually do have a short video from some footage from our Safety Rodeo that I believe Renee is bringing up.
We are here today for an annual Safety Rodeo, along with our partner JCSA. There are six different events here for the rodeo.
We have the fire department, health department, EAP, and a couple of other vendors that's going to help us with training and giving our staff some insights on things to be safe about.
This is a great day to just kind of bring awareness to safety. General Services and JCSA really have jobs that range from office personnel to people out in the field using chainsaws and all kinds of things that can cause hazards.
So it's important for people to be on the job. Well, for forethought, today's event, we're going to have fire extinguisher training, and that will help identify the classes and types of fires for the types of extinguishers you would need to use.
Safety is not just about keeping yourself safe. It's about keeping your teammates safe, your colleagues, our customers safe.
Top to bottom, left to right, everybody here is important. We need you to serve this community. I thank you for stepping in and doing that. There's not a thing that Doug or I or our elected officials can do without you. You make this community a great place to live and work.
We appreciate everything you all do every day.
We should have led with that, I believe. That was really good. That was really good. All right, and now the stormwater seminars?
Stormwater folks could come on up.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing is, just wanted to let you know that President Larson is our VACO president this year and has done an excellent job representing James City County and Virginia Association of Counties, and we're going to miss her in November when she moves out to the immediate past president. So, but you've been great job.
That's what I'm proud of.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a proclamation, 2025 United Way Day of Caring. Whereas the United Way of the Virginia Peninsula has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to improving the lives of our community members through its focus on education, health, and financial stability, and whereas the Day of Caring stands as our community's largest annual volunteering event, bringing together hundreds of dedicated individuals from across Virginia Peninsula, and whereas this event serves as the official kickoff for the United Way of Virginia Peninsula's annual giving campaign, highlighting the importance of collective action in addressing local needs, and whereas the Day of Caring provides a unique opportunity for residents and workers in our community to gain a deeper understanding of the challenges faced by our neighbors and the vital work of local nonprofits and human service providers, and whereas this day exemplifies the spirit of compassion, generosity, and civic engagement that defines our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby proclaim September 12th, 2025, as the Day of Caring in James City County, and I call upon all citizens to recognize the value of volunteerism, participate in this meaningful event, and support the United Way of Virginia Peninsula in its mission to create positive change in our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of this county of James City, Virginia to be affixed this ninth day of September, 2025. And we have that for you.
Thank you all very much. Many thanks, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors and county leadership and staff for your support this year and years past, and we know in the future, not just of our United Way, but of the nonprofit organizations in our community that helps so many of us during hard times. Thank you very much for your gifts of time as volunteers, for your treasures as a part of our campaign, and for your kindness to your neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Is it okay if I invite my colleague Ellen to come up and talk about our annual kickoff that will get us excited for Day of Caring?
Thank you.
Yeah, we are having a kickoff event on Thursday evening from 4:00 to 6:00. We're doing it at three different breweries. The one here is Virginia Beer Company. We're also doing it at Coastal Downtown and Coastal Uptown, and we're having a bartender challenge where we are having a little friendly competition between the three localities to see who can raise the most funds and who can bring in the most people. So we would love to see you there, and it's just a great time to spend time with your community and time with your friends. And we have some amazing celebrity bartenders that will be pouring drinks and serving, including Ruth Larson, who will be at the BBC.
Yeah, exactly.
We also appreciate your collection of healthy snacks for the kids, too.
And now we move on to public comment, and, maybe we have just two, okay. Our first public comment speaker is Mr. Jay Everson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Went to the Legacy Hall, I think it was last week, on the information center, information session on the government mega center, and you talked about the fact that you're hoping to push dirt in October. Well, we have an election going on, and we know one seat's going to be vacated and possibly another one. We don't know who's going to win, but we have two candidates out there who have pledged if elected, they will defund that complex. And if you sign a bunch of contracts prior to that, of course, there'll be water fees, courts, liquidated damages, and all that. Considering the fact that we're going to be financing this over three years, according to your CIP, waiting till November 5th to see what the election results are, seem to be to be a prudent policy going forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Chris Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. And Ms. Larson, I'll expect a long pour in your line then.
Me, too.
So, anyway, when we were together last, I made some comments about a suggestion for regulation of a particular type of massage parlor, which is known as an Oriental Spa. The actual Oriental Spa is Oriental Spa LLC and is located on McLaughlin Circle in James City County. It is not a racial slur. It wasn't intended to be one, and so any intimation that it was intended that way is simply not correct. I want to renew my call again to move the 5:00 PM meeting back to 7:00 PM so that it is more convenient for citizens. County government needs to operate for the convenience of its citizens, not for the convenience of its staff. Like Mr. Everson, I attended the informational sessions, both the early afternoon and the evening sessions, and it was clear to me that a majority of those in attendance opposed the James City County municipal complex as envisioned, and I can state that at the second meeting, that it was unanimous, being that I was the only one in attendance, and I strenuously object to the project. only one in attendance, and I strenuously object to the project. The record should reflect that there was unanimity from those in attendance as citizens. We were promised in the beginning of this process, a beautiful, functional building, unique to Jame City County, reflective of its community values and character at $94 million. That's not what we're getting. Instead, you have delivered to us a $250 million debt bomb that is going to paralyze this county for the next 20 years. It is going to take away our financial capacity to deal with emergencies relating to our water supply and our school systems, which could be dropped on us at any moment. And I would reiterate Mr. Everson's call to defer action on this until after the election so that we can make sure that it is the will of the board going forward that this project would be undertaken. I would like to thank the county administrator for having Carol, I believe is her name, contact me about the 250th celebration. And I had a nice conversation with her, and she assured me that there was extensive planning that was going on behind the scenes and that they're actually trying to schedule a headline musical group that would come and perform that weekend in April. I think it's April 19th, something like that, plus or minus. And anyway, that was a big relief because it's something that we should celebrate and something that should be used to promote Jame City County. I did note that I read in the paper that the school board chair made an announcement regarding a pending resolution of the school agreement. So I see in your closed session tonight that that is on your agenda. I can only hope that is the case. But again, I reiterate my call to undertake a study to at least determine what the cost would be to Jame City County for us to go our own way with regard to our school system. It is better for our students, our parents, and our taxpayers. And our duty is not to the citizens and the students and the taxpayers of the city of Williamsburg. It is to those of Jame City County. Let's see. Also, I would note that in studying commodity pricing for construction, prices for lumber and metal are currently going down, and so is the interest rate. So my hope is that by delaying, that the county would benefit from reduced interest rates as the Fed looks to lower the rate in September and perhaps again by the end of the year, and also that commodity pricing will continue to go down in the face of reduced demand. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. Our next is the consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar consists of the following items. Dedication of Streets in Section 2B of the landfall at Jame Town subdivision. I may have a motion to approve the consent calendar. Was for approval? Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Stevens, please call the roll. Mr. Apple?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Okay, we move to public hearings. And I'll note that our planning commission representative this evening is Dr. Kira Allman from the Roberts District. And thank you. And we will start with number one, Ordinance 24-0002, Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Regarding Data Centers. Kristi Parish to give the...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. At its meeting on March 11th, 2025, the Board of Supervisors adopted an initiating resolution to consider amendments to the Jame City County zoning ordinance to address data processing centers, also known as data centers. Data centers are facilities which store, manage, process digital data. They are usually large warehouse buildings that house computers, network, equipment, systems, servers, appliances, and other components related to the operation of digital data. As technology evolves, with artificial intelligence such as generative AI, the demand for data has heightened. Examples of AI that use large amounts of data are applications such as ChatGPT, Gemini, Apple, and Apple Intelligence, and Microsoft Copilot. Data centers are not defined currently in the ordinance and are permitted by right in the M1 Limited Business Industrial, the M2 General Industrial, MU Mixed Use, and EO Economic Opportunity Districts. Additionally, RT Research Technology District permits data centers as an accessory use. Data centers produce a variety of impacts, both positive and negative. Positive includes, but are not limited to, additional tax revenue, low traffic generation, and no demand on schools. Other positive statements that were cited in the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission states that data centers provide positive benefits to Virginia's economy because of the industrial's substantial capital investment. Data centers employ fewer employees than other industries, but data center jobs tend to be high paying. And then localities with data centers can collect substantial tax revenues from the industry, primarily from business, personal property, and real estate taxes. However, there are also some negative impacts to consider, which are, but not limited to, visual, energy consumption, water consumption, air quality, noise, and waste. Data center regulations vary among localities ranging from creating an overlay district by allowing them by right, or by special use permit, or by special exception with or without performance standards. Other localities are in the process of creating data center policy to address citing criteria, site, design, building design, and utilities. There are approximately 300 data centers scattered across Loudoun County, Fairfax County, and Prince William County, known as Data Center Alley. Staff presented materials to the policy committee at its June 12th, 2025 meeting. Staff, excuse me, which included defining data center, remove data processing center as a permitted use, consideration of adding data centers as a specially permitted use only when adhering, excuse me, I misspoke, considering data centers as a permitted use only when adhering to certain criteria and performance standards in the M2 zoning district, and consideration of adding data centers as a specially permitted district in the EO district. The policy committee discussed concern that the data centers serve large corporations located elsewhere and not directly to the local community, unknown electrical consumption and demands on Dominion Energy, and would like to encourage data centers to incorporate edge computing, which brings data processing and storage closer to the system in which generate the data. After discussion, the policy voted four to one to recommend the following changes. One, to add a new proposed addition as shown on your definition as shown on your screen. To remove data processing centers from the following districts, M1, M2, MU, and EO. Add data centers as a specially permitted in the M2 General Industrial District and the EO, which I'll get back to shortly. And also recommend that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to develop a comprehensive board policy for data center facilities to identify best practices for reviewing future application. Staff presented the proposed ordinance recommended by the policy committee to the planning commission on the June 2nd, 2025. The planning commission by vote of six to one recommended approval of the ordinance with one change, which was to exclude the use from the Economic Opportunity District because the area is designated on the comprehensive plan as economic opportunity or close proximity to established residential areas, and the use was not consistent with the intent. Staff updated the proposed ordinance as directed by the planning commission. And in conclusion, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the attached draft ordinance, and if desired, to direct staff to develop a comprehensive board policy for data center facilities to identify best practices with regard to policy and regulations for a future meeting. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'll start off. Ms. Parish, thanks very much for this, and thanks to the staff for putting all the work into this, gathering information, and going through the process of identifying areas in which there could be consideration of data centers and the like. Originally, it was my request that we develop this kind of a policy. And I think that what I'm getting out of this presentation is that we really do need to do that because currently, it would be the case that there might be opportunities for data centers to be established without any special scrutiny that would come with a special use permit. And that, I think, would be a real mistake. Since this is an area, this kind of industrial development is likely to go through significant changes in a relatively short period of time. We need to have a process that allows us to adapt to that and to make sure that we have the opportunity to have full investigation of the implications of approval. So just from the perspective of developing those standards, I would first say that that is important. Secondly, I did hear some discussion at the planning commission that concerned me a bit, and that discussion basically said, there's really only one place we can put these, and it's in the southern end of the county. Because I represent the southern end of the county, my ears went up significantly. And the notion that there is industrial property in that area was felt, the expression was that that was a good idea because, you know, otherwise you'd be talking about citing them adjacent to established neighborhoods. I think there are adjacent neighborhoods to these properties as well. And depending on the nature of the facilities, that's something we really need to take into account. I can't predict the future, but I can speculate that like computers, data centers are likely to shrink in size and increase in efficiency and be improved over time as long as they are around. And so we ought to be in a position where we can evaluate what those changes have been and to recognize that we have citizens who may be adversely affected. One planning commissioner talked about the fact that when he goes to visit his daughter in Loudoun County, there's a persistent noise, that hum that is quite audible and of concern to them. So I think that in the first instance, we really need to be thinking about putting this plan together, a policy statement that will allow us to determine what kind of factors we need to put in place through our ordinances. But then, secondly, that we need to recognize that there, in our county, there are not really very many good places for this to be developed. And it is important for us to keep an eye on what's happening more broadly before we leap into this brave new world. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I was just going to talk about the policy as well, with one concern being that there's been a lot of change. And so, you know, what is the best way to keep up with that? Because data centers have changed in size and different things as they've evolved. So how do you make a policy kind of be able to keep up or make sure we're reviewing it? And there is lots of concern. By the way, VACO has a podcast about data centers, so I urge people to listen to that. But also would say that we heard yesterday at a housing symposium about in Rico County using the revenue that they're getting from the data center for affordable housing. So it's not all bad. There can be some good things that can come from the tax revenue as well. But my main question would be about the policy. And as we work, not question, I guess, but as we work through it, just how we can make sure that we're coming back to it as these things evolve. So.
And policies can be amended, I believe, easier than the actual ordinance can.
I was looking at Albemarle County. This is one of the things that bothers me is the amount of water they use, up to 88,000 gallons a day, which is a lot of water. So Albemarle adopted a supplementary regulation requiring that data centers be served by public water and sewer and cooling systems that must be either closed looped or recycled water systems and generators. And my question, can we get water from the James River as well? Can they, could they take water from there and recycle it?
I think the idea to develop a policy would be go back, review some of the existing policies that are in place. I do know at one time when we were talking about some standard procedures or standard criteria for it, it did talk about not being served by groundwater, which would cover JCSA. But then they would also need to make sure that there's sufficient quantity, say from Newport News, I'll just put that as an example, or from another water source, that they would be able to serve that type of business. So all those standards and criteria can be worked into the policy to make sure that those water concerns, electric concerns, and so forth would be identified or be looked at as either a favorable or unfavorable when the special use permit should have come to you.
I do think that in the material, Ms. Snow, that we were given, it indicated that they need potable water in order to be...
I saw that in there, but then I was reading something else.
But I agree, as time changes, it's going to have different impacts, or they'll have different technology that would help cool the system and so forth. So by having a policy that does talk about not the reliance on water for groundwater, I think would be an important factor into coming before you.
Now, would that, what John stated, for the only place to put it would be down in the Grove area?
Not to be served by JCSA water, that would be the only location, to my knowledge.
Right. Because the more I'm reading and hearing about the data centers, they're shrinking, they're not using the water that they were using, they're not using the power that they were, they're getting better, like John was saying there, you know, like the computers, you know, it used to take a huge room for a little computer. Now we carry it around in our hand. So, you know, and it's changing so quick. You know, I don't want to make it so tight that we close our doors totally, but also need to be careful enough. And I know with the BASF property, you know, in that far back corner, you can't, you're a long way from neighborhood, just like some of the areas up in the upper end of the county. But, you know, have we talked to Dominion and asked them what their knowledge is and where they are and what they're seeing the data centers changing and doing? And I heard that they're getting ready to put on a couple seminars about data centers and the changes to data, and how they're using less water, and there's different sizes and type, because we may look at, okay, we don't want a mega center. Maybe you want, like some of our solar stuff, smaller centers that fit within the community. And, you know, then the noise level would be totally different than those, you know, because a lot of, you hear a lot of, you know, they're the older systems, the bigger systems, they're noisy, they're a lot of power, a lot of water and everything else. And they're just carrying that into, that's the way it is. But it's changed a lot, and it's not that way now. Those centers have to be that way, but hopefully they'll change those eventually and help the people that are having that problem. And I don't want to bring a problem into Jame City County, you know, with noise and that swelling, so. But I also don't want to lock out an opportunity for a revenue that would give us enhanced money where I'm not having to put it on the citizens to raise their taxes, I can utilize that. So kind of balance the two, you know, figuring out the size, getting with the experts, find out from Dominion, are y'all, is it true? Are y'all doing some classes? Are you doing something that we can go to and sit in and listen to and find out more information on these data centers and what the changes are coming before we make too many policies in place? I know we might want to, you know, like we did with building there for a while, when we, when we decided, hey, we want to change a few things, we put it on hold for a little while while we went through the process. And it gives us enough time to go through the process and get it right. And because I don't think any of us totally know, and it's not necessarily our fault, it's just not where we're, you know, educated in, and it's changing world and all the added stuff that's going on with it. So I would almost think that... So I would almost think that, you know, we, I would see we need more information and not locking it down to just one area, because, you know, there are other possibilities, possibly, and it may end up going into the next board that may end up making a decision on these policies and, but.
I think we can probably come up with a policy that is probably flexible enough for the board to be able to review based on, you know, trending new technology and so forth, if they're getting smaller and so forth. So I think as we reach out to Newport News Water Works, and we'll talk to Mr. Powell, and to Dominion Power, I think we can probably come up with some language, as well as some guidance for the board when they're looking at. And it would be up to the applicant to really come in and say, you know, here's our new technology, this is how we're not affecting the water supply, or we're reducing the amount of energy on Dominion by these new technologies. So hopefully the policy can be written to where it's identifying those large button concerns, that noise and so forth. And it's the applicant's role to make sure that all those impacts are mitigated based on policy guidance, as well as the technology of the providing. And then that would give the board, hopefully, the right avenue to make the proper decision for the county.
And I would, I would say, you know, that I'd rather it not take a toll on our drinking water. We've got enough stress on that as it is now, and that, like I've said since I've been on the board, that's gold. And, you know, if there's a way to reuse water or circulating, you know, in-house and keep a rainwater, whatever, you know, there's got to be technology, if they can, you know, like saying, if they can put a man on the moon, they ought to be able to get this straight, so. But.
And, you know, if the board's desire is to direct staff to do a policy, we can certainly take that back for the next, you know, few months, work with the Planning and Policy Commission, or Policy Committee and Planning Commission, to make sure that we kind of cover all those aspects of concerns and maybe look at some new technology before we bring that back.
I'd hate to limit it. You know, it's almost like you're strangling it, and there might be other possibilities, but it may depend on sizes.
Sure.
And.
Certainly, as technology does increase and they get smaller or whatnot, then the board would have a purview if they wanted to open up to more districts and add them as a special use permit rather than just M2. So, you know, that could come down the road as technology changes. But before you is just to make the use defined in the ordinance permitted only by special use permitted M2, and then we'll take the input that we've received from the Planning Commission and others back and to develop a policy to bring back forth to you at a later date.
But then again, we get back to the same thing of M2 limits. It limits the, I'd rather see if there's any other options and hold on the vote, or, you know, hold on any development on anything coming through till we figure out, is it, can we go smaller? And will that work and fit within some of the areas in the county that, and, you know, we can always say, we don't want it to look like a warehouse. We do it with restaurants and everything else, and the plantings and everything else, it doesn't, it doesn't have to look like a big old warehouse. We can say, this is, this is our standard, and this is what it needs to fit within. And, you know, but I think if we vote on this tonight, it's basically locking it in the M2, it's locking it down in John's district, is the only spot that it can, that it could be in, and that's the BASF property would be the, unless there's any other that I don't know about.
There is, I mean, there are some M2 properties up by the pottery, as well as Hankins, what's left vacant. I don't have that number for you. Certainly, if it's the desire of the board, we can step back and look at smaller options, depending on the district and so forth, and bring it back to you.
And would that be something the board would think about as far as, hey, would smaller, unique data centers work within, you know, and we'd be, you know, the board and the Planning Commission be in charge of style and product? And John, you brought it forward.
Well, yeah, I think that the point tonight is just to say, we'd like to see a policy developed. And then the question is, what does that policy look like at the end of the day? And so I think we're raising some issues we want to see addressed in that policy. And I think that's where we are going to make our determination tonight, just on whether to move ahead on that. Is that right, Ms.?
On the policy, but the other portion of the ordinance is to define data center, remove data processing centers from the other zoning districts, and then make it a special use permit in the M2 district.
I would, I understand your concerns, Michael, but I think what we don't, basically right now, what we have is we have by right.
Right.
In certain areas.
Right.
And I think I'm not comfortable with that until we've had a chance to more thoroughly analyze exactly all the policy we want. And we went through this with solar as well, and we went through many iterations of it till we finally got a policy that we could all agree on, and that we think was pretty, pretty comprehensive. I would, I would prefer to see us go ahead and pass the ordinance, which basically says, all right, it's not going to be by right, it's going to be something that, we're not leaving it at administrative function, it's going to be something that would require an SUP in this particular circumstance. And therefore, if it came to us, we do have the ability to say, you know, all right, we're not ready to look at it until we get our policy in place. But I really do not want to leave it out there by right as opposed to an SUP. So I would propose that we pass the ordinance change, we can always come back and, you know, after we get the policy established, we can always come back and amend that as we see fit, based on what our policy turns out to be. But when we do the policy, I would suggest that we do it in like two increments. I think what we need to do is to basically, with this list of things you have, that you've looked at, is to have staff go back and start the process, and then bring us an update in a couple of months, two or three months. And say, all right, here's our discussions, here's what we're thinking about, and then have the board to have an opportunity to give a little guidance or input before they come back with a final policy for us to adopt.
Yeah, as long as, as long as it doesn't end up, you know, we keep it open, I know the vote tonight will close it only to that one particular piece, but, and then with an SUP as we stand, if this passes tonight, but just so that we keep it open during the policy time, that if we decide that we can fit it somewhere else within the community, you know, over to Hankins across the interstate, you know, might be an ideal place to have something like that. And next to the interstate, I'm sure there's just much noise you're hearing off the interstate would be on that data center. So, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, we could look at, and we could even put noise walls around or something and require, I don't know. But, but just want to leave it, if we vote on this today, just want to make sure that we can come back during policy and readjust, if we see, we may see there's nothing to do.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think, I think that once we start this policy, review, a policy review, and I think, like I say, an iterative step where they bring it to us and we give some guidance and make sure that we get it shaped the way we want it, and it may take a while till we finally get there. But we always have the opportunity to, to, you know, say, okay, if something comes along, we're going to hold off on it until we get, get the policy in place so that we have good guidance, and it may, you're right, it may decide, we may decide at the end of it, we have policy that we think is effective, that we could come back and revisit what, where we allow it, whether we allow any of it by right, or whether we allow any of it only by SUP. But that would, that would be something I think that we could come back to do, I'm just not comfortable leaving the door open on it right now.
Oh, it sounds as though we should have probably done the policy first, but then we kind of got ourselves in a fix, because right now we can do something, we're, we're open because of by right. So we have to do something to fix that.
It would have been nice to do the policy first, but we've got, we've got a problem, I think, right now that we really need to fix with this, and then go into the policy pretty much in detail.
But the BASF property could be utilized after this vote, could be utilized with an SUP.
Sure.
All right, any other discussion? We will now ask Dr. Almond to come up and give the Planning Commission report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. During the July 2, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, we discussed several impacts and concerns related to data centers. There was a concern that data centers primarily serve large corporations, as staff mentioned, outside the local community, and that their substantial electrical consumption could place unknown demands on Dominion Energy. Commissioners also highlighted widely documented negative impacts, such as their visually unappealing warehouse-like appearance, high water usage for cooling systems, adverse effects on air quality from generators, continuous noise from cooling systems and equipment, and potentially the generation of hazardous e-waste. One commissioner raised concerns about the absence of a clear decommissioning plan and the fact that the building height requirements did not explicitly include rooftop HVAC systems. There was also discussion about which districts should be considered for data center construction, and there was concern about permitting data centers even with an SUP in mixed-use districts due to potential visual impacts on nearby residents. A commissioner also argued for a by right option in specific M2 districts, pointing out areas with existing substations, a lack of residential homes to be affected by noise, and surface water considerations, and expressing trust in staff's ability to ensure compliance. Another commissioner set out a case for requiring data centers to provide local community benefits, such as computing capacity dedicated to local startups or research institutions, in an effort to ensure that data centers serve local needs and are sustainable in the long term, if current data center, if the current data center boom gives way to a data center bust. Overall, though, there was consensus that best practice criteria are needed to mitigate the adverse effects of data centers in the local area, and there were no public comments at the Planning Commission meeting. So ultimately, the Planning Commission voted 5-1 to recommend approval of ORD 25-0002, with some amendments as presented, including limiting their placement to M2 districts only with a SUP, and recommending that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to create a comprehensive policy for data center facilities. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions for Dr. Almond? Okay.
Well, that was a, that was a lot. You know, I know that sometimes we'll even do it, we'll get into where we start going, well, how are they planning on spending their money? How are they planning on doing this? How they, and I think our biggest thing is to stay on task as far as what is our job ahead of us and where's our lane? And, you know, it, it's free enterprise, and, you know, how that money's spent is not the policies. It's the policies, does it fit within this? How they, how they generate their funds, or how they spend their funds, or how they go about and whether it's serving us or not, the tax base will serve us. And that would be our benefit. But, you know, I think more of a concern about how it affects neighbors, the noise level, those sort of things, the more concrete things is something with, you know, with the Planning Commission, you know, I would like to see them, you know, stay closer to not some of the other items that are kind of, well, I'm curious to know that, you know, that's outside the job. And that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Almond. Okay, we will now open the public hearing, and I have Mr. Chris Henderson to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. As many of you probably know, I have been representing BASF Corporation now going on 25 years in its attempt to divest and redevelop the property in the lower portion of the county. And during that 25 years, we have attempted to reposition the property for development as a resort. BASF specifically excludes residential uses because of its prior use as a manufacturing plant, and the county was, in its latest two iterations of the comprehensive plan, adamant about its intent to keep the property as an industrial property. Well, I can tell you, having worked on a couple of data center projects, that the BASF property is ideally situated for development as a data center site. I say that based upon the existence of overhead power lines. You have two 500 KV lines and two 230 KV lines that traverse the property, coming directly over from Surin nuclear power plant to a massive 20-acre substation that's located within 1,000 feet of the end of BASF Drive, that has existing capacity to handle multiple modules of data centers. In addition, the BASF site contains a pipeline for natural gas, which is a key element in providing backup power for data centers that is required should the main line of Dominion go down. There is an existing pipeline there, and there's also a step-down station along Blow Flats Road that's available for further reduction of pressure, so that you could bring it back to a plant on-site at BASF, so it could have backup power. BASF is also looking at backup battery capacity to provide another element of power assurance for potential users at that location. BASF also has, is surrounded by water, and is exploring utilization of James River water for potential use in cooling facilities. BASF had a permit that allowed it to withdraw up to 2 billion gallons of groundwater while it was operating its manufacturing facility, which closed in the 1990s. So the elements that are required for a data center are all there. That is reliable, reliable power in abundance, water, gas, oil, and isolation. The BASF property, if you haven't been there, and I think many of you have, it sits at the end of a mile-long road and occupies two miles of frontage along the James River and about another mile between Skis Creek and Woods Creek. So it's in essence a peninsula in and of itself, and it has no immediate neighbors that would, that could see structures that would be built on the site. So in terms of its isolation, it is ideally suited. And if the county is serious about having data centers in James City County, then it should be looking to remove barriers, not put them in. Speed to market is absolutely the most essential factor, and by forcing M2 land, specifically the BASF site, to go through a special use permit process, it will put the property at a disadvantage at a time where we need the additional revenue. You are contemplating spending $250 million, and here's an opportunity for you to get that facility paid for without that money having to come off of the backs and wallets of James City County taxpayers. Each data center is valued at $3 to $4 billion. They come in nodes of four. The multiple nodes could be accommodated on the BASF site. So the practical implications are, from a tax standpoint, this could more than double and potentially quadruple the land book and taxable business property values in James City County. I urge you not to force M2 into an SUP. Thank you.
Close the public hearing and look to the board for discussions and our motion. Nobody has any discussion. I did want to ask one question of staff. Apologize for not asking this earlier, but it struck me when I read through the text of that, that it got to the very end, then it says in the definition, this is to exclude mining of cryptocurrency.
Sir.
Can you give me a little bit of rationale behind exactly why that, how that's to. Can you give me a little bit of rationale behind exactly why that, how that's distinctly different and why that would not be included in this?
We wanted to make sure, since we didn't know all of those general impacts and since we were just identifying data centers, we wanted to exclude that use for further consideration should the board seat fit.
Okay. But that's something we would, again, we would have to look at as a separate issue.
Yes, we just wanted to make sure that if someone came in with cryptocurrency mining, that since we are exclusionary in nature, that that would not be permitted.
Okay. The other... I'll go ahead and move the ordinance amendment. Stevens, roll please. Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
No.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We now move to ORD 25-0003, Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Regarding Pedestrian and Bicycle Accommodations. Ms. Liz Parman will give the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you, as a recommended ordinance to amend Section 24-35 of the James City County Zoning Ordinance, this section requires developers to dedicate and build pedestrian and bicycle lanes for certain projects requiring a site plan or major subdivision review. My memo to the board outlines certain constitutional concerns with this code section, and to address these current concerns, staff developed three additional exemptions under subsection C. Number six would be the development is for outdoor operations and/or outdoor storage, and it would not apply to outdoor venues for sports, entertainment, or retail. Number seven, there is not an existing sidewalk within one mile of the proposed development and/or the development is more than 500 feet from the road. Allowing these types of exemptions for projects seeks to prevent the county from imposing exactions from a developer that are not related to the proposed development. Staff recommends that the board adopt the proposed ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Parman? Okay. Dr. Allman, give us the Planning Commission report, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, during the August 6th, 2025 meeting of the Planning Commission, Deputy County Attorney Liz Parman presented the proposed amendments emphasizing the constitutional concerns with requiring land dedication for pedestrian and bicycle lanes for projects that may not necessitate such accommodations. She explained that any requirement for land dedication must be reviewed under Supreme Court decisions relating to takings and exactions, as you just heard, citing the need for an essential nexus and rough proportionality between the development's impacts and the required dedication. A commissioner sought clarification regarding the application of the ordinance amendment, specifically asking which road these amendments would refer to, and Ms. Parman confirmed that it applied to the road adjacent to the proposed development. There were no public comments at the Planning Commission meeting. So the Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of zoning ordinance Section 24-35, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Questions for Ms.?
Questions.
Thank you. Okay, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards on this one? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll look to the board for discussion or motion.
Move the motion. I move the...
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, we have a motion. Please call the roll. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Number three, an ordinance to amend and reordain provisions of Chapter III animal laws. And I believe our treasurer, Ms. Jenny Tomes, is going to give the staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Eisenhower and members of the board. The proposed ordinance changes before you this evening will update our dog licensing ordinances to allow the county to issue lifetime dog licenses beginning January 1st of 2026. James City County currently offers multi-year dog licenses depending on the expiration date of a current rabies vaccination. Since 2007, our licensing fees have been $5 or $8 a year depending on whether the animal is spayed or neutered. In the last five years, the number of license issued annually has declined each year. In FY '25, less than 1,000 tags were issued for roughly $7,000 in revenue. In 2017, the state codes related to the licensing of animals were amended to allow localities the ability to issue lifetime licenses. Since then, many of our neighbors, including the city of Williamsburg, York County, New Kent County, and Hanover County, have switched to lifetime license. These neighbors charge varying amounts from $10 to $50 for these licenses. Tonight, there are three proposed changes before you: removing annual dog licenses and replacing them with lifetime licenses; updating the fee schedule for licenses to $15 for all dogs; and adding a clause to allow those with current licenses the opportunity to exchange their annual license for a lifetime license at no cost. By changing to a lifetime license, we will significantly reduce the burden on our citizens associated with renewing licenses on an annual basis. In addition, neighboring jurisdictions that have enacted a lifetime license have seen compliance with licensing requirements increase as well as an increase in revenue. My office will continue to record vaccination information as it's received from our veterinarians and make the information available to our animal control officer, who is very supportive of this initiative. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms.?
It's a great idea. Having to go in every year is ridiculous. I think that's wonderful.
So that sends you, when they give a rabies vaccination, they send you the paperwork? And the numbers have gone down?
Number of those buying licenses has gone down.
Right. So do you follow up with, like, Ruth Larson's dog goes in and gets, I don't have a dog, so, don't come after me. Boomer, though, rest in peace. So I go in, get the rabies vaccination, they send you a copy of that. Are you staffed enough to follow up, to say, Ruth, I didn't hear from you after you got Boomer the vaccination, and you owe me money?
Oh, right now, we are trying to use our tax system to do such a thing, and it's not working well.
Okay.
But in the last couple of months, we've developed in the office a database to streamline it so that it's not connected to the tax system, so that animal control can have access to it because it's no longer attached to the taxes. And that system has been created to generate letters after 90 days.
Okay. And I guess on the flip side of that, it helps animal control, if they come in contact with the dog that maybe bit somebody, they would know whether or not they were properly vaccinated. Okay. Thank you.
This, I have three at home, so I guess the question that immediately came to mind was first, I didn't know the level of compliance, but I think if you're only generating $7,000 worth, it's about 1,000 people or roughly a year, and we got 85,000 people in this county, and I know we probably have about 80,000 dogs. So I would say that the, would you say that it's probably a pretty fair assumption to assume that the level of compliance with dog licenses is probably almost nil? Okay.
Mostly, it's people that are attending dog parks that have to have that.
Attending dog parks and stuff, yeah, okay. The thing that concerned me a little bit, and I think you partially answered it at least, was, you know, I know when I went to get a license renewed, I had to have a valid rabies certificate, and if I had one, if I had a three-year certificate, I could renew for three years or whatever, which is fine. And I was trying to figure out, how do you try to incentivize people to make sure their animals are vaccinated? So if I have a lifetime license now, and you know that I have a lifetime license on my dog, and he had a three-year certificate, at the end of three years, if you don't see a new certificate come in, then you know that you can have the animal control people come to me and say, hey, you know, you really need to go get him vaccinated. That's more what my concern was, is to making sure, because I think it's a public safety issue, making sure that the animals are vaccinated for the safety of our public. So once I was able to disconnect the old system from the new, I got a greater level of comfort now, I think, that we're probably headed in the right direction, and we would have a greater level of compliance. So, but I appreciate, I just wanted to make sure we were okay with that.
Yes, and like I said, we'll continue to keep the information updated from our vets. And they, of course, aren't going to do anything with your animal in the office until they have their rabies vaccination. So my goal is to make sure that we have all of that information available to our animal control, which is difficult to do right now.
Very good. The other questions? We have no Planning Commission report on this one, and I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers on this? Okay. Close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion and a motion. Move the adoption of the ordinance. Okay, Mr. Stevens, we have a motion. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, number four, SUP 25-0004, 4622 Rochambeau Drive, Evolution House Group Home. Ms. Terry Costello will do the staff presentation. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mr. Greg Davis has applied on behalf of Evolution House LLC for a special use permit to allow the operation of a group home housing more than eight individuals at 4622 Rochambeau Drive. The property is located along Rochambeau Drive and Cloverleaf Lane, which is a frontage road along Interstate 64. The group home is currently operating within the existing building located on this property. The building was formerly a doctor's office. The property and surrounding properties are Zoned A1 General Agricultural and are designated rural lands in the comprehensive plan. They are also located outside the primary service area. The SUP, if approved, will allow for the operation of a residential home that supports men recovering from addiction. It is important to note that the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based upon disability, which includes this type of recovery. The proposal includes housing up to 16 residents with on-site staff. The exact number allowed to reside in the house will depend upon obtaining an updated certificate of occupancy for the building classification, an updated permit for the septic system, and maintaining the capacity allowed by their state license. Staff is recommending conditions which are intended to mitigate the potential impacts of the use and preserve the residential character of the home. In addition to the condition on the number of occupants, there are proposed conditions related to licensure, emergency procedures, expiration of use, among others. Staff finds the proposed use should not negatively affect the surrounding property nor county services and fills a housing need within the county. Staff therefore recommends approval with the proposed conditions. At its meeting on July 2nd, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of 6 to 0. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Questions for Ms.? Questions, thank you. And Dr. Allman, if you give the PC report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, during the July 2nd meeting of the Planning Commission, the applicant's representative highlighted that Evolution House addresses a critical local need, boasting a high success rate and demonstrating efforts to achieve building code and fire safety compliance. He described measures to address neighbor concerns, such as imposing stricter curfew rules to prevent residents from wandering away from the facility, and requiring expulsion for trespassing and a strict zero-tolerance policy for drug or alcohol use. Several commissioners expressed support for the project during the meeting, commending the applicant for holding a community meeting and working with staff to incorporate SUP conditions that address concerns from neighboring property owners. And during the public hearing, the Planning Commission heard three statements of support for the proposed group home from nearby residents. The Planning Commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of SUP-25-0004, 4622 Rochambeau Drive, Evolution House Group Home, with conditions to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Questions for Dr. Allman? Okay, thank you. Okay. And I will open the public hearing, and we have some speaker cards. We'll start with Mr. Gregory Davis, applicant's representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Greg Davis from the James City County Law Offices of Kaufman &amp; Cannoles at 4801 Courthouse Street in Newtown. Pleasure to be before you tonight, representing Evolution House. Project team is MAI Homes LLC, which is the owner of the property. My client rents the property described by Ms. Costello. Jeffrey Carver and Ryan Watley, Ryan is here tonight, were the founders of Evolution House, both recovered from substance use disorders and very much a mission-driven business that they have founded here. It has now grown based on community demand and is professionally managed, and Mr. Eric Rhodes, the CEO, is here tonight representing Evolution House as well. Our project architects, who are assisting with code compliance, are Hopkey Harrison and my firm, Benny Zhang, and myself are pleased to represent the applicant on legal matters. You heard a case about our Richmond Road facility some months ago, so you'll have some familiarity with Evolution House. Now nine locations in the Tidewater area, based on demand for this successful program. Evolution House Group Home is licensed by the state, two different agencies. It's voluntary. Present time, there are no court-ordered residents of Evolution House. These are folks who have come forward voluntarily, seeking help with their addiction treatment. And Evolution House boasts an incredibly high success rate compared to the industry, and I hope to show you a little bit about why that is tonight. The emphasis is on the house. Here's what's going on inside. As Dr. Allman mentioned, this is formerly Dr. Bedell's Country Medical Office, now upfitted for the Evolution House use. It's all about housing for men who don't have housing. Our residents are folks whose addiction have led them to lose relationships with family, their credit rating is damaged, maybe their savings are depleted, their job is gone. And so housing is the key component, an environment where they can, have already undergone the intensive treatment, the detox part of kicking the substance use disorder, but now need time and a stable, supportive environment to recover. Typical stay about 90 days. Here are the bedrooms. These will be code compliant throughout Evolution House under the special use permit conditions. And here's an evening of good, clean fun at Evolution House. It's more residents means more support. More folks who are traveling that same road that our residents are traveling, and particularly the veteran, the longer-term residents, are able to recognize a housemate who may be tempted to relapse and pull him aside and provide that support. The location is particularly appropriate. Here with the green arrow is the location of my client's Evolution House. This is Rochambeau Road to the west. On the east is Interstate 64, and as you can see, we're sort of at a triangle of property. The property next door, there is a residence on that property. As I've gone by it, I'm not sure it's occupied as a residence. It's more of a contractor yard. There are storage buildings out back with materials and equipment parked there. So the closest neighbors would be across Rochambeau Road. We knew that neighborhood concerns would be a focus of the board, and so before even filing the application for the special use permit, back in February, we sent out a mailer to the closest neighbors and convened a meeting at the Croker Library, and we had a good turnout. We had 15 or more of our neighbors, we think, and we were listening to their concerns. And let me tell you about their concerns and how we responded. Some of the neighbors reported seeing folks walk up and down Rochambeau Road that they didn't recognize. They couldn't say whether they came from Evolution House or not, but it was unnerving, particularly at night. So we changed the Evolution House manual, which is given to every resident and reviewed at Sunday House meetings, to impose stricter curfew requirements. And in the Rochambeau house, there's a specific section that talks about respecting neighbors. Don't wander into a neighbor's yard. Don't go down a neighbor's driveway. We're not certain that these are Evolution House residents that caused the concern, but we'll make sure they don't perpetuate the concern. Our neighbors asked, who are these residents? What kind of folks are coming to our neighborhood? The Evolution House team explained, no sex offenders, that's our policy, and we asked the staff to include that as a special use permit condition, and you see that in the proposed ordinance tonight. It's rare that applicants for Evolution House have a criminal history of violence. It's not uncommon for folks who've struggled with substance use disorders to have some sort of criminal record. You'll see the con- You'll see the conditions before you tonight have a very carefully crafted SUP condition, which I worked on closely with staff and Ms. Parrish, to require two levels of approval from state-licensed professionals before any resident with a violent criminal history could be admitted. Those will be rare. Our residents were concerned about what's going on at the Evolution House. Is that a party house? Is there going to be drug use there? We assured them there is no drug or alcohol use at any Evolution House. There's random drug testing. Each resident signs up for that. They do it three times a week. Single sanction. If you test positive, you leave Evolution House. It's zero tolerance. Residents were concerned about oversight. Well, they liked some of these policies, but was there going to be somebody other than the residents present at the house? Evolution House has in its SUP conditions that we propose to the staff, 24/7, 365 staffing by trained professional employees of my client. Residents were not terribly concerned about traffic and parking after we explained that most of the Evolution House residents are not permitted to bring a vehicle. Transportation is provided in vans owned by Evolution House, that take the residents to their therapy, which is off-site every day, and then to recreation in the community, movies, bush gardens, church. These SUP conditions, we felt were attractive to our neighbors, but there was concern, what's the accountability of Evolution House? So again, working with staff, we crafted conditions that required an annual report to the police chief. If Evolution House does admit a person with that violent criminal background, it'll be because the clinical social workers, counselors feel that the passage of time, history of conduct from that resident justifies admission, we still report those to the police chief. There'll be an annual report to the zoning administrator of occupancy numbers, so that the county can assure we don't exceed the 16 residents which are requested in this application. And then a contact person was key to our neighbors. Who do we call if we see a problem? So we've now provided that contact information, even before this hearing tonight, to our neighbors. We've provided it to staff, and that's an SUP condition as well. The county has to have a contact person who has charge of Evolution House. In fact, it's Mr. Rhodes, the CEO. His cellphone has been provided to the county and the neighbors. You know a little bit about Evolution House. I thought I would wrap up my presentation tonight by maybe giving you some additional information about the need for Evolution House in our county. New applications are on the rise, Ryan and Mr. Rhodes tell me. The pandemic created huge problems in the substance use disorder community, and those are subsiding, as are the number of overdose deaths across Virginia. And yet Evolution House in our county is seeing an increase in applications. The counselors there report that fentanyl, which used to count for about 75% of the drug overdoses in Virginia, fentanyl abuse is diminishing. But a new illicit drug, trank, xylazine, which is an animal tranquilizer, first emerged, from what I understand, in the Philadelphia area, is now becoming more common in our jurisdiction. And the Evolution House counselors report that more complex cases are coming forward, not just alcohol or just drugs, but sometimes combinations of these two substances are presenting challenges. Other news from Evolution House is that it is now partnering with Centerra Optima's plan to broaden its availability to people in the community, in the Centerra Optima system, and even the Centerra Hospital system. And Evolution House has now reached an agreement with Colonial Behavioral Health. The arrangement is that if there's a recovering addict who needs Evolution House, Evolution House admits them first and figures out who pays for it later. Maybe Evolution House can help that resident get Medicaid. If not, and Evolution House doesn't get paid, that's a risk my client is taking. That's a community benefit. And part of this treatment, of course, is housing for these folks who are recovering, who need housing, and the job services that are a big part of the Evolution House program. So members of the board, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this application, as has staff, and I would respectfully request that the board approve the special use permit with conditions as applied for that the applicant supports. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, you had me in tears last time, so I'm all for this one. With all those guys coming up, that was great. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Chris Henderson.
Mr. Chair, Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I am an employer of several of the current and past residents and graduates of the Evo House program, and I currently have two individuals who are working to become, I guess, trained consultants or caseworkers to help their fellow addicts. So these are guys that are working full-time for me, that are now engaging in skills to be helpful within that rehab community. And so it's tremendous when these people get a second chance at life, and I want to encourage all the other employers that are out there to give those folks a chance, because my experience has been very positive that when a person voluntarily goes into a program, their chances of succeeding are 10 times higher than if a judge tells them they got to be there. And so I think it's incumbent on all of us to do what we can to help these folks get back and be productive citizens, so I encourage you to support the application. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Henry, is it Strattman?
Strattman, 3809 East Steeplechase Way. I'm a former resident of the Evolution House. The pandemic was brought up by Mr. Davis. That's when I moved in. I moved in in the summer of 2020. I remember I went through a pretty hellacious detox on my own, in my crummy little apartment over there behind High Street, before my parents yanked me out, and they brought me to the Evolution House because it was the only other place I was allowed to go. My roommate was kicking me out, and you know, I was a lot to deal with. And I was very, I don't know, when we first get into recovery, it's very hard, it's extremely uncomfortable. But the Evolution House, you know, I'd been trying to get sober. I started pretty early, when I was like 18, getting shipped across the country to different programs, Asheville, North Carolina, you know, just all over to try and get help. For whatever reason, Evolution House is where it stuck for me. When my parents brought me to the doorstep, I was greeted by Ryan here and the other co-founder, Jeffrey, and I was, it was kind of charming. You could tell their sincerity and their passion for what they were trying to build was so real. I actually lived with those two for about a year. Every dime they had went into building what is now, you know, something pretty beautiful. And those guys made it work for a whole gang of us men who had nowhere else to turn. I think, you know, I'm pretty keen on the fact that everyone is empathetic with what they're doing at the Evolution House and what kind of impact it has on the community. But I kind of wanted to just talk a little bit about like what truly happens, like inside of these homes. When I first moved in there, I was probably the youngest guy by like, I don't know, like 10 or 12 years easily, and I felt kind of out of place. I don't think that's too terribly uncommon for, you know, addicts and alcoholics, always kind of searching for like that feeling of belonging. But I was made to feel like I was home, and I think that that's something that they still, that's something that they've perfected, is that they make everyone feel like they're a part of, and they make everyone feel like they have a home, and brothers and, you know, sisters to turn to. So when I was there, you know, something that was told to me was that the number one thing in like recovery is just doing the next right thing. And when we're out there in the street, we're not so used to doing the next right thing. You know, we're doing whatever it takes to get by, to get high again, to survive, and a lot of the times, you know, that doesn't, you know, turn into the next right thing. So when you have a group of men who are, you know, willing to do the next right thing as a group, as brothers in arms, something really beautiful happens, and there's an accountability there that I don't think is, I mean, you can't even write it, you can't get that anywhere else. And that was my experience. I was there for about six months, and then they asked me to be the house manager of the Rochambeau House. Actually, one of my rooms was on the slideshow with the TV at the foot of the bed. It's kind of cool to see that, it's been a while. But they asked me to be like, you know, one of the house managers, the overseer of, you know, all the other men in there. And that was an honor. I learned a lot about myself at the Evolution House. I learned, I think, how to become a better leader, how to lean into some of my natural gifts, what strengths do I possess as a man, and how are those brought out of me? And that's an approach that they still take to this day with whoever comes through that door. No one ends up there because everything's going super well or for a vacation. I'm still pretty involved with the men who come in and out of the program, and to see, you know, how far they've come. When I lived there, I think there was, I mean, there was only eight of us, and today, you know, they're pushing upwards of like 60 across the board. And the approach is still the same. You know, I talk with the owners all the time, and you know, there's like a special sauce to the place, is like what they like to call it, and that's alive and well, and it's being, it's being transferred over from like, you know, people who came through the house in 2016 over on Brookhaven Drive to almost 10 years later, and the approach hasn't changed a bit. So I'm just, you know, I'm very grateful to be here tonight and for hearing us out, and I thank you for your time. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, sir. And our last speaker is Mr. Cole Sanderson.
Members of the board, Cole Sanderson, owner of the property at 4611 Rochambeau, in the Broad and Tracto, right across the street, in that little red area right there. Just been coming to these, I came to one on July 2nd to get some more information. Mr. Davis provided a lot of great information for me. Reason that this property, 4611, is so important to me is this is where my father lives. My father is disabled, so nobody cares about safety on this road more than I do. So when I was 26, I bought the house, and he's been there ever since, since I was in 2022. And all the concerns that Mr. Davis brought up, they were valid concerns, but I think that, you know, everything that this organization's put in place, I have no concerns with this house being here. And I think that, as he's just mentioned, that there's a lot of positive benefit to the people that go through the program, which provides a good benefit to the community. So I fully support this. Thank you very much.
Last speaker. I'll close the public hearing, and I'll look to the board for discussion and our motion. Motion for approval? Motion for approval? Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. And our number five is farming lease, the Riverside Farm Incorporated. Mr. Carnifax, give a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, last month, we purchased some property located at 6693 Richmond Road for a future fire station, number six. I'm here before you tonight, and you have a memo and resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute a farming lease on the property. It's presently being farmed by Riverside Farms Incorporated. They're also farming our mainland farm area, so any questions you have on that, it's just a standard lease. We wanted to be consistent with how we're handling mainland farm and our other properties, so we're just bringing this back to you for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
What's our income?
Not much. It's presently being farmed for free, and as you know, it's only eight acres, and so, as you know, mobilization of equipment and all of that, so it's $100 a year.
Wow, okay.
And an ear corn.
Yeah, and free corn.
I think it's beneficial to keep it in farming.
No other questions for Mr. Carnifax?
No.
Okay, we have no planning commission report tonight, so I will open the public hearing. Any speaker cards? Okay, close the public hearing, and we will look to the board for discussion and our motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Please call the roll, sir. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. That completes our public hearings. We have no board considerations tonight, so we have board requests and directives. Oops. What?
Okay. I attended National Night Out with the Police Department again this year, and it was lovely, but there's not a lot of turnout, so we had some talks about that. One of my suggestions was maybe next year to try to do maybe three of them, one down in, at the Roberts Rec Center, and maybe at the Rec Center, and then up at the Upper County Park, something like that, to get more people, because I saw most of the same people from last year. That's okay, but it's a lot of manpower and so forth, going through, getting all the cars out there and the fire trucks and everything else. But it was fun as usual. Then I went to the Wisk 25th Anniversary at Jamestown Park, and that was lovely. There were quite a few people there, and it was fun just getting out and meeting people. And then Ms. Larson and I attended the opening of Wawa. That was exciting. I got there at quarter to eight, and there was a line all the way down Long Hill, all these people, and then they were passing around food, and everybody was there. It was really fun. And then they had the hoagie making contest between the police and the fire department. The police won, but they were nice enough to share the trophy with the firemen, because it was like a couple seconds, because they were throwing food. You can't believe what it looked like, but it was a lot of fun. And the good thing, I keep telling people, is go to that Wawa, because it's in the county and we get the revenue, instead of Lightfoot. And that's it.
I have said that several times myself.
You did.
Yes. So, and I just want to appreciate the very attractive picture that was put on me from the, on the county website, from the Wawa opening, when I was showing my app, let me be clear. It's been a very busy, you know, yes, we did not meet in August, but it has been an extremely busy summer. We had the VACO Summit, which many of us attended. We had our Region Two meetings. We, VACO has had held several regional meetings where, that is how they put together their legislative agenda. And as diverse as our Commonwealth is, we all have very similar concerns and issues. And so now the VACO team will develop that legislative agenda, and we will be ready to go for session. So ours was held in Gloucester, and it was a very good meeting, and so that was, that was great. I missed the 4H ribbon cutting, but I want to, they did a whole ribbon cutting, they, from, I believe, from where they had their damage, and so I'm sorry to miss that, I was in a meeting. And then we, I would also say that the Visit Williamsburg, we did a retreat to start talking about sort of our long-term vision, what we're looking at, what are some things that we need to be talking about, is that new product. You know, our visitation is up, but we, one thing that we know, we know the Sports Center, and I believe that Mr. Harris will be here for our next meeting, he's going to give us an update on some business that has been booked into the Sports and Events Center. But it's just a constant conversation that we're having regarding, do we have enough product here? What does that look like? And so we did our, met on that, and of course, the 250th planning continues. And then in other news, I meant to bring my t-shirt in here, and I got, oh no, yes I did, just to make people aware, there is a new event this year, and that is the Williamsburg. You know, we are, we have the most pancake houses of any place, and we're finally going to start making something with that. And so there is a Pancake Festival in the last weekend in September, on, there's an event at the Greek Church on Friday night, and then on Saturday, Major League Eats, which which does the hot dog contest. Joey Chestnut could not make it this year, there was not enough time. By the way, Joey Chestnut gets paid fifteen thousand dollars to come to eat all the hot dogs and pancakes, et cetera, but might be worth it. Everybody's asked me if Joey Chestnut's coming. But anyway, um, there'll be, um, the, a pancake eating contest and several other things. We know this year is our first year, but we look to build and we're working on doing more events. So, um, we think that's really good news and we hope that'll bring more visitors to James City County and, um, the historic triangle. And, um, just take a moment, if I could, to talk about two people, um, that we lost that were important to me. And one was Elise Emanuel, who was my colleague when I was on the school board. She was the representative from the city for most of that time. And, um, Elise was a spitfire and she told you the way that it was. And that was kind of tough for me at first because, um, you know, I got on the board and she was by, she had been a counselor. She was used to deal, dealing with, um, high school students. She had been worked, um, she'd been on the VRS board. I, Elise had done quite a bit, um, in her career. And, um, so she, she was tough, but boy, she, I learned a lot from her and I really appreciate her service. She served, um, the city of Williamsburg very well and the WJCC schools and, um, she'll be missed. And on her services is Friday at two o'clock and I won't be able to be there, cause I'll be out of town. But, um, I really did want to mention and I wanted to thank Elise and I want to thank her family for, um, giving, having her the opportunity to serve. Um, she was also a single mom. She was a off, uh, she was a, um, her first husband was a, um, an officer. And so, you know, she tra, she went around the country with her husband, raising two kids, and then she was a single mom and she raised two really good daughters and has a grandson that she adored. And then my friend Penny Pulley, who, um, had been, um, on the Education Foundation since its inception ten years ago. She was the chair of the Education Foundation at the time of her unexpected death. And Penny was somebody in this community. I, I met her when I was on the school board again and it was in particular, no, I wasn't on the school board, I'm sorry, I was, um, an involved parent. But she was with a group that started an education coalition and they were a group that, um, they questioned, but they, um, they always had what was best for this community in, in mind and they wanted to work with people to make things better, um, for the public school students here. And so, um, and then Penny just evolved and told, and then till she went to be, um, chair of the, um, educate, education, um, foundation. Um, but always supportive of schools, she's raised thousands and thousands of dollars for innovation in the classroom. And one thing is for certain, I know, sorry, I wouldn't be here without her. So I will miss her terribly and so will this place, so, thank you.
I'm not going to, um, go through all the things that were going on, um, this, this summer when we had this so-called break in August. There were an awful lot of things going on. One of the, um, uh, best parts of it though was to, um, be at VACO events where, um, our colleague, uh, presided over those events or was an important part of it. And, uh, I'm glad that, uh, we had an opportunity tonight to hear a little bit more about VACO and, and so forth. Uh, and, uh, just yesterday she had the opportunity to introduce Senator Warner at his, uh, housing affordability, uh, uh, summit, uh, in Richmond, which, where several hundred people were present and VACO was one of the co-sponsors. And I was pleased to hear Senator Warner say that, uh, he wanted to assure all of his friends in VACO and VML that, uh, any efforts that he's making at the federal level to in, to incentivize, uh, uh, housing opportunities, uh, would not come at the expense of the authorities of, of local governments. So that was, that was a good thing to hear. Um, uh, and, and I do want to, uh, say that, um, uh, this has been, I think, a very, um, emotional and, and difficult, uh, summer season for, uh, Ruth. Uh, she lost a, a friend colleague and, and somebody that I respected and, and regarded as a, a good friend, Joe Fuentes, who also served on the school board earlier in the summer. She spoke at that funeral and I think people were just terribly touched, uh, by her rec, uh, her remembrances of, of Joe, uh, and his, his service to the community and just his, his, uh, wonderful nature. And I also had the opportunity to be present for, uh, her, um, delivering a eulogy for Penny Pulley. And, uh, you know, I was proud to know Penny. I think she was a real force in the community. Uh, she did wonderful things for the Education Foundation. Uh, and, uh, I, I think my, the last public event I saw her at was when she presided over the, uh, teacher of the year ceremonies and was able to give a very substantial gift because of, uh, her, her encouragement of some generous, uh, anonymous donors, uh, to the teacher of the year. But, um, then Ruth was called on to give an obit, uh, basically a eulogy for somebody who, uh, it was obvious that, uh, was one of her very closest friends. She, she documented that by saying that she told Penny who her hairdresser was, uh, which was, which she would, said she would, she would not do for anybody else.
That's right.
But, uh, uh, I, I don't think there was a person in that room that wasn't moved, uh, by, uh, your expression of what it means to be a friend. And the way we lean on our friends to, to do so much for us and rely on them and want to be there for them as well. And so, uh, it was really, uh, inspiring. I'm going to talk about Elise too.
Okay.
Because Elise Emanuel, uh, I knew for about fifty years, uh, soon as I came to this town practically. Uh, and, uh, she lived most of her life in, uh, in this area, in James City County. And was active in Williamsburg James City Education Association. Uh, she was a great social studies teacher. She was an excellent counselor. She headed the counseling department at, uh, Lafayette, uh, before she retired. And she was just an absolute, uh, um, force of nature in promoting education and trying to see, uh, that, uh, teachers were well represented. Um, not only teachers, but other state employees too, because upon her retirement, uh, she served as a member of the VRS board, the Virginia Retirement System Board, multi-billion dollar operation, and then was selected to be the chair of that board. Uh, just a, a remarkable accomplishment for somebody who was a, a great teacher, uh, a wonderful counselor, uh, but you know, not somebody you would expect to be at the top of this major financial institution and yet she was and she did an outstanding job there. Uh, she, uh, was somebody that, um, had the unique ability to be able to finish your sentence with you. When, when you, when you talked with Elise, you know, sometimes other people have this a, a ability to kind of jump in and sort of try to help you finish your thoughts, but usually get it wrong. She always knew exactly what words were going to be coming out of your mouth and, and, and could, uh, repeat them, uh, so, so, uh, effectively. She was a very effective political organizer, uh, and advocate for, uh, teachers and education. Um, uh, there was, I, I, I relied on her, uh, every time I ran for office, whether it was for Congress or for the Board of Supervisors. She was part of literally our kitchen cabinet. We would sit around the kitchen table and talk about, uh, what we were going to do. Uh, and, uh, she, uh, was somebody who you wanted to rely on. She, um, she, uh, had this, uh, uh, great ability to, to help you understand the importance of the issues and how to, to, uh, function. And, and she would connect you with everybody that you needed to, to know and, and work with. And, uh, I, I would say that, uh, in, in thinking about Elise, um, uh, she was the, she and I, um, disagreed one time over a choice of candidates for governor. And she beat the pants off of me in, in that case. She could always do it. Um, uh, you know, as Ruth has pointed out, she had, uh, she has, uh, two wonderful daughters and a grandson, uh, who is, uh, who was her pride and joy. Uh, and I will miss her very, very much. Had the opportunity to speak with her just days before she passed away, but, uh, uh, it was really, um, uh, a great honor and privilege to, to be in her company. One other person passed away and, uh, she moved from, from, from our area a little while ago, but one time in the past when I was chair of the board, I had the, uh, distinct privilege of recommending Sarah Katic for the chairman's award. Uh, Sarah, uh, was, uh, a passionate citizen activist who, uh, led the J-4Cs, uh, the James City County Citizens Coalition, uh, that, uh, worked hard to make sure that we had the kinds of ordinances that we've been talking about tonight that allow us to maintain a, a great community. Uh, forced, uh, us to, to confront the ways in which we, uh, were thinking about development so that it was better. And, uh, helped to, once again, draw together people, disparate people from across the community to send a very clear message that, uh, uh, James City County is a special place and if we want to keep it that way, we have to work hard at it. Um, so, uh, Sarah passed away over the summer as well and, uh, I, um, extended her family, um, my condolences and, uh, thanks for what she did for James City County. So with that, I'll pass it on, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It's been a tough summer for losses, um, and of, I, I, I really can't add much up to than some of the glowing things that my colleagues have already said about most of those folks. The only one that, uh, we, we had a, um, I would say a, a little closer personal relationship with was Elise Emanuel and that was because she and my, my wife were sorority sisters and they, they were in a, uh, sorority group together. Uh, and so I, I used to see Elise a little more frequently and, uh, like that. Um, I, I will say that, uh, it's been a, August's been a tough month for our family. We've, it's the month of surgery. Uh, my wife had surgery, I had surgery. Uh, my grandson's dog that we inherited had surgery. Uh, so, uh, we've been, we've been in a medical ward re, recuperation and I do appreciate, uh, Ruth, you stepping in for Wawa because, um, I was recovering from surgery at home and my wife and my daughter said, "The heck with you" and they went to the Wawa opening and I get to stay home. So, uh, thank you for filling in for us. They, they were really looking forward to that.
She was desperate to get one of those lots.
I was.
The only other thing I've had recently, uh, is we had, um, an interesting, uh, ribbon cutting and it's unlike most new businesses we're opening. This was a, uh, a twenty-five year, um, it was twenty, yeah, a twenty-year celebration, uh, of one of the very first businesses opened in Newtown and that was Be Define Fitness. And they opened apparently in the SunTrust building and then they moved down to where they're right on Sullivan Square, right across, next door, right across the street from, from Legacy Hall. Um, and they had quite a turnout of people, uh, there for that, that celebration. Uh, so it was, uh, instead of a, a, a new business, it was a celebration of a, of a, of a thriving, uh, successful business in Newtown and I was very, very pleased to be able to participate in that. I will say that, um, we did quite a bit of work in August, uh, on, uh, the VACO. Um, I, I will thank, uh, Madam Chair for making sure that I got roped into being a committee chair for the finance committee. Um, uh, so we will be doing a, a lot of, a lot of work and I will be passing on to my colleagues some of the, um, uh, agenda that I'm sure Ruth sees, but I want to make sure everybody has a chance to see some of the items that are being come, considered by the finance committee before we get to the, uh, uh, conference in, in November. Um, and aside from that, I will look to.
Can I just say one thing real quick? Um, first I want to thank Dean for coming. Poor Dean, he gets to see me more than he probably ever would want to, but I really appreciate you coming, Dean, cause I know what a crazy schedule you have. And then I would just say yesterday, I, and I think, um, John would agree, that housing summit was really informative and a lot of good information and a lot of panels. Vaughn was there, gave, asked a question, got, but we're doing, we've done quite a bit. I don't think the, the recognition is there quite enough about all the things that Vaughn and that team has done about, but there were some really good ideas and innovative ideas about, you know, what's some uses for public land and, and, you know, um, I did, I ended up talking to one gentleman that, about, you know, how do you repurpose, say, a, a commercial building? And it, it's not as easy as you think it might be because of plumbing and things like that and so that, but there's a lot of things that are going on in Virginia, um, about affordable housing. Um, it's, the, the age that people are buying a home now is, is thirty-eight, which may, you know, people are getting married later and, but a lot of that has to do with affordability. And, um, there's just a lot of statistics out there that, you know, we're, people like me that probably need to be moving someplace for one level, um, aren't because of the afforded, for me to go somewhere to be able to afford something and get a good interest rate, it's getting tougher. And so a home like mine that a family might be able to move into, you know, that more people, seniors are holding on to their homes. And so there's so many different factors and it was just really informative. I don't know, I don't think it was being recorded, but I would just urge if, if there's ever another opportunity, um, and I, I hope Vaughn will come back, I'm sure he will, and, and give some information as well. But sorry for the interruption, Scott, but I wanted to really point out that I thought that was really useful.
Reports to the county administrator, sir.
Chair members of the board, just a couple of items. I do want to just, uh, share again that with your support, we have installed school speed zone cameras, again, trying to reduce speeds around schools and improve safety. Uh, they are active now, so they are, uh, Norridge, Stonehouse, DJ Montague, Calera Bird, Baker and James River Elementary Schools, Savannah Middle School and Lafayette High School. If you run it or running more than ten miles, ten miles an hour or more in the school area when the s, school zone lights are flashing, you will get a warning ticket through October and then in early October, they will turn into a hundred dollar citations. And so they intend us to slow people down, make safety, uh, better around our schools. So please, uh, just be aware of that and share with those you know. Uh, also as a reminder, our school buses have cameras on them as well and so we want to make sure people are watching for stop school buses with their stop arm out and light flashing and again, trying to improve safety for our children going and coming from school. Uh, our skate park, uh, at the James City County Recreation Center, uh, we are proposing moving it to the War Hill Sports Complex. We do have a public input session that will be held on October ninth at the James City County Rec Center from six to eight PM, just trying to get ideas from the community, share where we are and go forward with what would turn into a better, uh, uh, amenity for our community and our skate park users in general. Uh, and then finally Newtown Tunes, our concert series that we do in partnership with Culturefix and Newtown Commercial Association kicked off last week. It is a free concert every Wednesday evening, uh, starts just after five o'clock, uh, Sullivan Square behind Legacy Hall in Newtown. So I would encourage those that are not sure what to do on a Wednesday night to come out and spend the evening with another five to eight hundred to fifteen hundred residents that seem to enjoy the outdoor concerts, depending on the weather and the band that we have. So, uh, that's all I have, sir.
Chair, can we take a five-minute recess before we go into closed session?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll take a five-minute recess. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Back in open session and I would look for a motion to certify.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we would speak about in closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens call the roll.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn.
Aye.
Mr. Isenau.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Yes, I have a motion please to appoint Mr. Brad Reinheimer to the Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees for an appointment that would begin October 1st, 2025 and expire on September 30th, 2029.
Okay, we have a motion. Stevens call her roll please.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn.
Aye.
Mr. Isenau.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, may have a motion to adjourn until 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, not Saturday, September, not Saturday, September 23rd, 2025 for the business meeting.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn.
Aye.
Mr. Isenau.
Aye.
We are adjourned.